Good evening and welcome to the Board of Trustees Regular Board Meeting for August 27, 2024. I'm Gina Steiner. I'm the Vice President, filling in for Eric Fong tonight. Unfortunately, he's out due to illness, so I'm going to read the mission statement. It is Inspire curiosity and connection, and we're going to do welcome introductions with our Director, Jason.
Good evening and welcome to August, our August Board of Trustees meeting. And from left to right, Administrative Assistant, Executive Administrative Assistant Tammy Jeffries, Deputy Director and Chief Financial and Operating Officer Dan Baer, and I've got Deputy Director Shannon Peterson of Public Services with me as well, Executive Director of the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation Wendy Kyle, Director of Human Resources and D E I Lacretia Robertson, and last but not least, Director of Facilities and I T Mike Rose. Absent is the Director of Strategy and Communications Jeanne Allen. She's excused tonight. And we have a special guest tonight, special guests, plural. I'll only introduce one of them and have her introduce her team later. North District Regional Branch Manager Leanne Winterald is here, and she is phenomenal, and will give us a nice presentation a little later. That is it.
Thank you, Jason. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Okay, we don't have any members of the public here tonight, so I'm going to skip over the public comment section, and we're going to move into the consent agenda. How do I move this here? Okay, all matters listed within the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request. Tonight, we have minutes of July 23, 2024 Regular Board Meeting, payment of July 2024 bills, payroll and benefits, and surplus library materials withdrawn from the collection for July 2024, 3,820 items. Is there any discussion on any items? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda item?
So move.
A second.
A second.
A motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. And next, we're going to move into presentations, reports, and briefings. It looks like, it looks like Leanne is up. And I'm not biased at all about my favorite branch.
I have an easy audience this evening. All right, well, good evening, everyone. My name is Leanne, and I serve as the North Kitsap Regional Manager, representing the Little Boston and Kingston locations. Both my locations operate in close partnership with the communities that they serve. Kingston celebrated eight years at the Village Green Community Center this past April, and the Little Boston location celebrates 50 years in partnership with the Port Gamble Skalum Tribe as of tomorrow, as a matter of fact. So it's also my pleasure tonight to introduce Adult Services Librarian Michelle Will and Youth Services Librarians Tori Ogawa and Michelle Swaddish. They have been busy creating community and fostering connections in North Kitsap through services, partnerships, and programming. Aren't excited to share these updates with all of you. So I'm going to turn it over to Michelle Will to start things off.
Hi, I'm Michelle Will. I am the Adult Services Librarian up at Kingston, the Kingston Library. Just this, one more. Oh, okay. And I'm excited to share about our seed library that we started this year. As you might know, there's a seed library also at Port Orchard and Manchester. So based on their success, we really wanted to start one up in North Kitsap. And so Kingston and Little Boston partnered together to do this. We started planning back in 2022. And man, was this such a big success. So we started back in 2022, and we ended last month with a great response from the community. They benefited from almost 4,000 packs of seeds, with 3,100 given out at Kingston and 860 given out at Little Boston. So the seed libraries are now at four K R L locations, and they just enunciate what K R L values. Looking at the, back at the program, it's a platform for interest-based learning for all age levels. It touched little kids to grandparents. Everyone benefited from it. They had created, it created opportunities for us to bridge relationships in the community. It fostered curiosity and empowered all patrons, no matter their background, to build something that's sustainable and impactful for their households. And there's so many examples of how the seed library made a difference in our community. First of all was just sincere gratitude. Every time someone came in, they were like, "Thank you, thank you," all the comments. We had a little sign-out sheet, "Thank you, thank you, thank you." This has, you know, really benefited our family, or different things like that. There were patrons discovering new varieties of seeds. Some people chose seeds to supplement their regular crops. They were regular gardeners. Some chose, were regular gardeners, and came in and chose seeds specifically for their grandkids or their kids, so that they could start little gardens. Some people, you know, wanted that sustenance for their tables and wanted to learn how to grow their own food in case of emergencies or bad times coming. There was one woman who was, sounded like she was a little bit of a chef, and she asked, she, she, we were talking about the seed library, and she turned, she started to walk away, and then she turned and she said, "You don't happen to have any Thai basil, do you?" She said, "I've been looking for it, and I can't find it anywhere in any stores in Kitsap County." And I said, "Oh, my gosh, I really do. I have it right here." So that was kind of fun, a fun interaction. We were able to do programs. We did a program on seed sowing to teach people how to sow their seeds once they got them, and they were able to take seeds home with them that they planted in pots. So it was just a really great service, you know. I didn't think it was going to be as impactful as I think it really was. So it just gives me a lot of pleasure to tell you about that. And last but not least, I can't leave without giving a shout out to my colleagues who, it couldn't have happened without them. And that is, I don't want to forget, Patty Pearson at Little Boston, and Kelly Knight, Beth Nichols, and Tori Ogawa from Kingston. So I just wanted to tell you that, and let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tori. I'm the Youth Services Librarian out at Kingston, and I'm here today to talk about school partnerships and the outreach that I do. I want to say it's probably about 50% of what I do. And I just love it because it makes it accessible for kids to have library services and meet the librarian and learn about the library without having to come to the library, because in Kingston, I think there's a lot of transportation issue where if they're not catching the school bus, there's no way for them to get somewhere else. And so in particular, today I'll be talking about Gordon Elementary and the Kingston Middle School. And you can see some really fun pictures here. So when I started in 2018, I was presented with a really good opportunity for outreach. Kelly Knight, our Library Associate at Kingston, was like, "Oh, my kid goes to Gordon," and they do, the PTA does a program called Passport Club, which is a geography-based enrichment program where the students learn five to 10 countries every month. And so we took that over from the PTA. They still fund, the PTA funds the program, but the library does all the planning, the creation of passports, maps, and all these things, and we hand it out to the students. We coordinate volunteers from the parent pool and other community members who want to volunteer at the schools. And every month, we go in and we do Passport Day or Stamp Day, where they all get their little passports. We quiz them on the, on the countries, and then we glue little stamps in their books, so they get to learn about geography. And then, a few years after that, I wanted to supplement this with a cultural program. And so we started something called Gordon Globe Trotters for the third through fifth graders, and we talked about culture, music, snacks, like I bought snacks for them from the different countries, crafts, just a fun way to kind of relate the geography to the culture, so that they're not just memorizing those countries, and they can kind of broaden their knowledge and their horizons. And that kind of went away because of COVID, but the PTA asked us about an after-school enrichment program, so we're going to start it up again this year, which I'm really excited about. And then beyond Gordon, I noticed that we didn't get any teens or tweens really coming to programs or to really use the library beyond books in Kingston. And so I reached out to the Kingston Middle School Librarian, and she was really excited about partnering with us. And we started the Teen Advisory Board at the school. And so that makes it accessible for any of the students to join. And so the Teen Advisory Board is interest-based, so the students really get to decide what they want to do with their time. We meet at lunchtime and during their advisory periods. The first year I did it, they wanted to start a debate club, and that's what we did. They, we taught them what the steps were to starting a club at the school. They had to find their own advisor and like plan their meetings, and that taught them leadership skills. And then there was a fundraising committee who wanted to sell snacks at after-school time to raise money to buy books for their school library, which was really cool. And then over the years, it's progressed. And a couple years ago, they wanted to start an anime manga club, and so I reached out to Crunchyroll, which is a like streaming service for anime, and we get to watch anime at school and talk and discuss manga. And then we started a Cooking and Baking Society. They made that name. And so you can see in our photos, like the librarian, her son used to work at a pizza place, and so he came in and taught them how to toss pizza dough, and like those are towels, but, but they got to learn how to do that. And that was all what, that's what they wanted to learn. And then last year, we kind of had to pivot because our kitchen classroom became something else, and so we really couldn't do it. But we, they wanted to do lunchtime activities for the other students, and so they planned crafts and STEM activities, like Lego challenges, a scavenger hunt in the library. They saw this TikTok trend about hiding small ducks, and they wanted to do that, and we let them do it. So they had a lot of fun with planning activities for the other students. And then I go into the school at lunchtime at least once, or once every other week, and do STEM activities. And you can see I bring in like connects or Legos and all our STEM tools, so I really use what we have, the library resources, and bring that to the students as well. If you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Oh, there it goes. Good evening. I am Michelle Swaddish, and I am the Youth Services Librarian at the Little Boston Branch. And tonight, I'm going to talk about three programs, three STEM programs that I've done recently. So the first one that I'll talk about tonight is our Glowforge program. And if you're not familiar with a Glowforge, what it is, it's basically a laser printer that can engrave or cut wood or acrylic, those sorts of materials. And so this was actually a purchase idea from one of our PGST summer school teachers. And so what we did was, this summer, we designed a program around the Glowforge for the summer school students. And what the students did was, they created an original design, and then they brought that into the library. And we, they learned how to scan that image into the Glowforge program. They had to tell the program what material they were using, what to cut, what to engrave. And so they got to see their, their artwork come to life. In the middle picture up there, you can see we're scanning and putting some artwork into the program. And then to the right of that, that's the Glowforge in action. And bottom left, you can see some of the original designs and the products that came out of that. And so there were, the students were learning about orcas this summer, so we had a lot of orca artwork, which was just incredible. So the next program that I'm going to talk about tonight is our Little Explorer program. And that program, it's actually offered at a few other branches in K R L, the Kingston Branch and the Bainbridge Branch. And basically what it is, it's a, it's a program where we explore a different STEM topic each month, and it's geared towards three- to five-year-olds. And so we might explore magnets, or robots, or error, you know, engineering, whatever it is. And so more recently, I've been collaborating with the preschool teacher to design this program around their curriculum, so that when they, like, for example, last month, they were learning, the students were learning about water. So we designed a program around water. In the bottom right picture there, you can see the students are, they had a boat challenge. So they had to build a boat that wouldn't tip or sink and could hold 10 little people. And they did an incredible job. And then we made bubbles, which water's an important ingredient, and bubbles. So that was a lot of fun. And, and then the last program I'm going to talk about tonight is slime. And so we're fondly calling this the Summer of Slime at my library. We, this idea was brought to us by one of our young patrons, and we thought it was an amazing idea, so we ran with it. And I purchased all the ingredients that were needed for slime. And in the upper left-hand corner there, you can see that we're gathered around the table, and we're all making slime together. And, you know, it's very therapeutic, even though it's messy, but it is very therapeutic. And, you know, it's just been an amazing opportunity to really get to know the students and the kids on campus. And I've actually met a lot of their caregivers, and their parents, and family members, siblings. It's just, you know, they'll bring their siblings in, and they'll teach them how to make slime. And it's just been a really fun program to have. And it's, it's also fun to watch them, you know, learn. Like, if they add too much of an ingredient, you know, they might have a slime that's not very stretchy, or if they forget something, they might have a soupy slime. So they're constantly troubleshooting and helping each other figure out, you know, how to perfect the slime. And a lot of times in the library, you'll hear, "You need more activator." And then somebody will squirt some saline solution in a bowl. And it's just been, it's been great. I'm just so honored to be able to serve this community and to have the tools available to support the students' learning and curiosity and discovery. It's just been an incredible experience, and I look forward to many more messy summers, for sure. Does anybody have any questions? Yes.
Well, my question is really for you, but any of you, because what I hear is, in some cases, you're talking about programs that are at your branches, but they might also be at somebody else's branch. Somebody else's branch in geography. So you, so you, can you, somebody talk about the collaboration that happens both internal to the library with your colleagues and partners, but also the fact that these partnerships are, or these activities are also defined by the community and your patrons and other partners? So how do you navigate all that?
Well, you know, we, for me, what I've tried to do is just listen to my community. And, you know, the suggestion that, you know, it was, it was, the Glowforge, for example, was a purchase idea that was presented to us by one of the PGST summer school teachers. And so we, we just thought it was, you know, an excellent idea, and we were able to build a program and collaborate together to build a program for the summer school students. Other things like the slime, you know, that was just listening to one of our young patrons, what they wanted to see at the library, and, and, you know, and just working with the teachers. So building those relationships for, for my branch has been kind of the, the key to being able to, to work with others on the campus. So, yeah. Did I answer your question?
So like, the Youth Services Team, we talk a lot. We talk on teams, and we have meetings every once in a while. We started having monthly Zoom meetings just to talk about the programming that we've been planning. We all plan very separately, and then somehow we see something that we like that someone else is doing. So the Little Explorers, I believe Bainbridge started it, and then I picked it up, and Michelle picked it up, and we're like, "That's a good idea." We don't necessarily do the same things at those programs, but it has that same concept. And so then me and Michelle will talk, and we'll say, "Oh, what did you do at Little Explorers? Oh, that's a good idea. Can I borrow those magnet sets that you have?" Or something like that. And then Baby Band is another program that's kind of gone throughout the different libraries. So I think Manchester, Silverdale, and now I do it as well. And so we just talk, and we have meetings, and we all borrow each other's ideas. It's not stealing. We borrow and give credit where credit is due. So hopefully that answers your question.
Well, and I can also speak to sort of the North Kitsap approach, you know, and I've been the North Kitsap Regional Manager now for three years. And so it was always my goal in merging those teams, to find those opportunities where the two teams could work together. We all share the same zip code. The branches are maybe seven and a half minutes apart, if you drive as fast as I do. But, you know, it's an opportunity to really connect with the team. And as the branches, most of the staff are now shared, going between the two locations, the community is very close. It's an opportunity to share resources, share talents. It's also an opportunity to learn from one another. We were very inspired by the Manchester and Port Orchard branches with their seed library, and we saw that ability to connect a service they were offering with a community partner that we had right next door to us. So we wanted to bring that to our location, really find that community connection first, then, you know, tap into the time and talents of our colleagues, because they really did pave the way. So we really want to thank them. So I just also wanted to thank all of you. Thank you for inviting us to share our updates. We really are having an incredible summer. We've just had so much fun, and hope that that was conveyed in our presentation. We can't do any of this alone, so without your support, we just wouldn't be able to do all the amazing work that we're doing. Also want to shout out again to our colleagues, Manchester, Port Orchard, specifically Jackie Wilson and Jen Hawley. They are the seed library experts in those locations. We also want to thank Megan Burton, the STEM and Learning Supervisor. When we were approached about the Glowforge, you know, this is a funding need. So I reached out to Megan. She had STEM funding. Thanks to her, her department, she was able to work with Lisa LaShuga and get permission to purchase that piece of equipment on our behalf. So we really thank her for that support. And also wanted to reach out and thank the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation, because thanks to the foundation, we had the funding to kind of launch our seed library. Because there was a certain amount of infrastructure, we had to, you know, we had to buy a lot of seats, a lot of little manila envelopes to make that happen. And then also, I want to thank the Kingston/Little Boston Branch teams, because without their support, we couldn't do all of these regional things. And I also want to thank Shannon, because she always leans in and lets me tap my time and talents and make all my plans. So thank you, thank you, all of you. And this might go to video. Just wanted you to see the Glowforge in action.
I had a question. Why is Little Boston called Little Boston?
I don't.
I do know. It's a little bit of a history lesson. A long time ago, Port Gamble Skalum people were located on the west side of Point Julia Bay, and a mill company called Pope and Talbot moved in and wanted to erect a mill, because it was a prime location for moving wood in and out of the bay. And they bartered with the tribal people there and promised to build houses for the tribal members. This was back in 1855, when the, 1853, I think, when the mill moved in. And they erected English-style houses on the spit at Point Julia. And a lot of settlers said it looked like a Little Boston. So even though it's the Port Gamble Skalum reservation, some of the first houses erected there looked like the East Coast-style houses. So that's why it's called Little Boston. We're moving away from it, and it's now, we take pride in saying Nuke at Nuxklem and Port Gamble Skalum Tribe, which is, Nuke at Nuxklem is the language for the location where we were originally settled there. So, and Nuxklem is Salish language for Skalum, which is the English version translated, so.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Thank you all for coming. Just a couple real quick questions. One, I really appreciate the seed library. I tried to grow last year with my daughter, and we're on a gap year, because it didn't work out too well. So we'll try next year and see how it goes. But have you considered maybe doing little vignettes for folks to kind of see how to do the plowing, the seed sowing?
We'd be very open to that, and we would probably borrow the Public Services Support Team's video equipment in order to make that happen.
I think I need to see it quite a few times to catch it. And also wanted to say, you know, I really appreciate, you know, finding a way to engage the teens at the school, and just wanted to know if they were talking about what they were going to do this year coming up, some new fun things.
We haven't started, because school started today, so we haven't talked to the teens yet. They really want to do the Cooking and Baking Club again, so our society, so we're trying to make that happen. Because we, I wrote a grant through the Schools Foundation to get them new equipment and tools and stuff, and we used it for one year, and then we got kicked out of the space. So we really want to try to start that again, because they keep asking, the kids keep asking about it, so.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I don't have a question, but just one real quick comment. Being the representative on the board for the north end of Kitsap County, I just want to express my gratitude and appreciation. You guys do have a significant impact on the community and going out and about. I've personally seen all of you, not just in the library buildings, but out in the community, and seeing Michelle in the classroom with my granddaughter, and seeing Leanne at community events, and meeting your other librarians. It's just, it's been wonderful and awesome. So thank you for your contributions to the community.
Thank you.
I just wanted to chime in, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say anything, because I've, I've been in, I think, all parts of these programs, you know, doing a storytime with Tori, which was amazing, and her skill sets are incredible. And then hanging out with Michelle and the, I don't know what we want to call that room now, but it is, is the combined Glowforge programming meeting slash slime space. And, and then just working at Kingston and, and working alongside, you know, Michelle, and watching her interact with patrons, watching patrons come in and utilize its seed library and everything else that the library has to offer. I picked up seeds when I worked a day at Kingston. And so I just really want to commend the team for really being community-minded. And I know it's easier said than done, but being able to have an ear for the community and being able to provide what the community wants is a specific skill set that I think this team, and all of our folks do it really well. So I'm not just saying they're going out Kingston, but I've observed and been a part of all of these programs, and I just really want to lift this team up. Leanne sets the tone and has really good relationships. And I've seen Gina, your granddaughter, out with the bubbles on the, in the, on the campus. And so it's amazing to watch in action. And so everything they presented up here, just watching it in person, it is phenomenal. And I think that the way this team has really leaned into, you know, the whole notion of curiosity and letting the patrons dictate with their curiosity some of the things they want to see, that's they want to see, that's part of that, you know, is not only them having their own curiosity, but tapping into curiosity of the patrons who are coming in. So I just want to lift up this team. It's really good work and it's always a good feeling being on the north end and connecting with you and your, your, your teams and your patrons. So thank you for all, all you do. We appreciate you.
Thanks again. It looks like we're going to move on to the next section of our agenda and we're going to do board member reports and I'll start at the end with Eric Sidney.
Don't really have anything to report this month.
Thank you.
I do. Just wanted to read this here. Little, little sad that Lisa Matiga is leaving us. And so I wanted to take a moment and just recognize and celebrate Lisa, someone who is truly one of a kind. Lisa embodies qualities that are rare and precious, kindness, compassion, patience and thoughtfulness, her intelligence and exceptional leadership. But perhaps most are her, of her defining qualities are her empathy. Lisa not only embodies the KRL mission of inspiring curiosity and connection, but she lives it every day. Working at the ML King Branch with the unique challenges in serving the unhoused patrons there, Lisa's empathy and dedication has shown brightly. She led with grace, particularly with her work with Project Connect where her commitment to serving others was evident in every decision that she made as she took on a leadership role there. I affectionately call her Lisa the kudos queen. She gives kudos to everyone and, you know, for a good reason. And it's not an afterthought to her. She really, when she writes something on a piece of paper and puts it in the bowl and pulls it out, it's because she knows you and she thought about you. So I've always appreciated that about her and she's done that for everyone that she's met. She takes time to really truly see them. Lisa compliments are never superficial. They're genuine thoughtful reflections of the time and the care. And she has a unique ability to make everyone feel valued and seen and appreciated. So those soft spoken, Lisa's words carry weight and wisdom and she speaks with generosity, always seeking to understand and uplift those around her. Her presence has been a gift to the community and her absence will be deeply felt. I was hoping Lisa would be here, but her smile and laughter has been a beacon in our community and she has made the ML King Branch an inviting place, a place where people can come to work, visit, find solace, to learn and explore, for kids to enjoy meals in the summer, for folks to cool or stay warm as a safety shelter. And I just want to thank her for her dedication to the Kitsap Regional Library and making such a meaningful impact, especially at the ML King Branch. She will be missed dearly, but I will miss her even more. So fair winds and following C's to Lisa.
Thank you, Marwan.
I was able to spend time last week with Jason and Wendy and Kathleen Wilson, actually at our, not the first ever. I mean, there've been other coffees with the directors, but this one was particularly set up to be able to share information with community members in, particularly in South Kitsap about the library expansion and the kind of ever-evolving plans that are supporting that. And it was a great attendance, I thought, and really, really good discussion and people are engaged. So it was fun to be there.
Thanks, Stephanie. I attended the Strategic Planning Committee meeting today. Marwan's going to give us a report on that, but mostly I'm just back, glad to be back in the swing of things and I feel like I've been gone for a while, although I think I only missed one meeting, I'm not sure. But anyway, Marwan, you want to give our Strategic Planning Committee report?
Sure. I'll try to keep it short. There's a lot in here. Operational updates, talking about the levy process, continuing to work to ensure all stakeholders are in alignment, looking at about an August 2025 time for that. Also discussed having a bond with the levy. The Sylvan Way is kind of the hub, the headquarters where admin is, vehicles, thoughts of having a super campus and kind of planning there. So those things are still ongoing, talks with the city and the school district. Right now, there, there's a redesign of the One Book One Community, one of my favorite things. Also the alignment of DEI policies are still going on, looking at language and accessibility access and making sure that those things are aligned with the vision. And many of those things looking to be completed around the end of the year, engaging with community partners, access to library for ESL patrons, looking at different target audiences and looking at project scope and addressing some of the challenges that exist. As far as staff wellness, September 15th is the Staff Picnic at Sylvan Way in the field. And so that should be a lot of fun, looking forward to that. HR policy updates, transportation policy updates, telework policy updates are complete. The other two are still in process. And then also looking at kind of long-range, looking at donated leave and modifying that language there. And then also long-range is the employee manual. And then October 7th is the Hybrid Staff Day, another great time. This has a team-centric focus. It will be planned by the teams to come together virtually during that day, trauma-informed for patients, patrons, which is super important, especially at the ML King Branch I was referring to earlier. UW will continue on with training on accessibility. And then for, there's an IQ platform, which currently, I guess we have the Collection HQ and this is that and more. And so what I took down here is the basic five Ws of what we want. The five Ws answered in real time, looking at staffing levels. It's a very dynamic system and it's a plug and play and it seems really exciting. It's going to be really beneficial to the library system. And then with IT, we're looking at the organization switching over to a two-factor authentication to access KRL data and next steps on looking at the Microsoft Exchange Server and the conflict between the hybrid model and the land and the cloud services issues that need to be addressed. And in regards to the two-factor authentication, I think it's pretty timely with what's happening with CTAC. And I'll leave it there because I think others will go into a little bit more detail on that. But those are pretty thoughtful questions.
Great. Thank you, Marwan.
I do have a quick question.
Okay, Steph.
That was a full, that was a full committee meeting for sure, but I just caught early on and I just want to see if there's a connection there. You know, a few months back, we had a community member join us who was talking about access for adult literacy and, and I, I think that was specific to also for community members who were English as a second language. So is this a kind of, was in the works, a continuation? How does that parlay to, I just want to call it forward because we literally had somebody here kind of presenting that, emphasizing the importance of that in the library.
Yes, that is also part of the strategic plan and I believe that'll be addressed in a deeper discussion by HR.
Good.
So yes.
Great.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like on 7.04, financial report by Dan Baer.
Well, good evening. We have good financial indicators once again in July. One point I want to just emphasize in this is that we've almost achieved our investment interest for the year at the end of July, which is really nice to be in that situation right now. So pleased to take any questions if anyone has any.
No, just, I don't have any questions. Do any board members have any questions? Your report is very thorough and understandable, so thanks for that, Dan. I think we're moving on to the Director's Report. Jason?
Yeah, good evening. And I think Marwan gave my report, so.
Yeah.
No, I, just, just kidding. There is a lot happening in the organization and I want to start with the, not that it's not fun, but starting with the fun stuff, which is really a pickup from where we just left off with the presentation. July was absolutely vibrant for community connections, engagement, programs. As you know, summer learning was in full tilt and we saw enthusiastic, enthusiastic participation across all age groups. And our dedicated staff have really gone above and beyond to make all of our programs successful. I really want to lift up Shannon and her team in Public Services for really giving her team the tools to be able to do the work that they do. You heard from LeAnn, you heard from Michelle Will, Michelle Swata, Shantori Ogawa about how they engage with their community. And that wouldn't all be possible if they didn't have the support on a base level from Public Services. So I hear it all the time when I go out and so that's why I'm parroting it back. All credit to our Public Services Deputy Director for giving her team a process and really a pathway to make magic in a community because that's exactly what it is. And I was a part of a lot of that. I supported Pride Festival at the Fairgrounds in July. As you know, we support large-scale events where we can to show up for the community. I'm proud of how our staff were able to show up and, and really show out for the community all summer. So as summer draws to a close, I really want to lift up all our teams for their work on summer and it's been a busy but successful summer for community work. I just really want to highlight, the library is still a busy place. We are continuing to see our numbers rebound from COVID across the board. I think door counts are up about 9% and circulation is up roughly 8%. And, and also folks are just using the library and, and often ways that they did and, and ways that they have not in the past. Our lunch programs are well-attended this summer, our free lunch programs, especially in East Birmerton. Lots of good stuff happened this summer and really, again, lifting up our staff, but they're coming back to the library. We're seeing increased demand for meeting spaces, of course, printing and computer usages way up across the board. And, you know, just for people to want to have community, that's important too, because a lot of people want to come into the library to build community. They want to have meetings, they want to engage. And so more important than ever is, is this notion that we have to lean into our community partners to be able to fill needs that we can't meet because the libraries are great, you know, for engaging with all of our community, but we don't have all the things there to be able to meet all the needs. And so it's really going to be incumbent upon us to continue to build our relationships, to continue to refine those relationships and, and to see where we can provide some gaps with those community partners that we can't meet just because of what our, what our structure is. We're a library. And so we've got incredible staff, incredible opportunities in the near future. So want to move on to just really celebrating our people because that's how we're going to keep us afloat and vibrant as a library system. So I'm proud of, of the work that this team, leadership team, has done to really engage with our staff and provide them with a level of information so that staff know what's happening in the organization. And I think we've always provided at least a modicum of information, but the way we're doing it now is entirely different. So in addition to my weekly messages that go out, you know, typically Saturday evening, leadership team is sending out a message each week. I talked about, a little bit about this last month, but within that, we've sort of added more content. And so it's really a way for the organization to see in real time what we're talking about in leadership team, what's coming up in the future, things we might be thinking about. And also it's a way to throw in upcoming events. We just started a new category of staff celebrations that has been particularly brilliant, I think, because a lot of us already have a practice of, of end of meetings, lifting people up, what are you celebrating? Just being human with our people. We recognize that as being a, an intrinsic value that we need to hold as an organization that, you know, in addition to us operating as a library, we have to continually celebrate our people and we have to continually show ourselves to be human. So I'm proud of the fact that we're starting to showcase what folks are doing. I mean, folks that get to hear about me and what I'm doing, it was a way that I could be more human when I got here to start talking about personal stuff. And, you know, it was, it was a stretch for me because I'm a pretty private person, but, you know, I think being human and allowing yourself to be vulnerable is important. And so as we can model that, I think staff are now starting to put those things in those messages. So you can see that several folks, a couple folk, one folk, one person got married and a couple other folks celebrated wedding anniversaries. And then we had a leadership team member who celebrated their child being in a place. So I think it's just a way for all of us to collectively lift up and, and celebrate our families. And so I'm really proud of those community celebrations. And IT continuing, you heard in the strategic, the long-range strategic planning meeting, we're continuing to dig into library security and cybersecurity specifically because we talked about some of the cybersecurity events that have hit our sister libraries in North America, namely in Seattle, Toronto, to name a couple. And so there's some learnings from that and that we've implemented, very short-term two-factor authentication, which we talked about last month, which has been implemented. Mike, I don't know if you want to give any more information on where we are or what your plans are without actually creating a security risk.
There's more to come. How about that?
Yeah, so my charge to really, Mike and his team, and Mike is currently rebuilding his team, is to really dig into soft spots and figuring out how we can, you know, remain stout as an organization in protecting our, you know, our assets, our digital assets. And so IT will continue to look at digital security and we'll give the board updates either in committee meetings or outside as they become necessary. And then Foundation, you, Stephanie, you talked about our, our meeting last week, but I also want to talk about the donor appreciation event at Kingston in July, which was a phenomenal event that happened at, in the Village Green Center. And so we were able to have award-winning author Kathleen Akala there, who was able to talk about her writings and her work and connecting all of that to her place that she lives and calls home in Bainbridge. And so that was a really engaging community program and that went off really well, a lot of good interactions with our donors and community members. So I just want to continue to lift up the Foundation because their work in, you know, both fundraising, promoting the library, donor recruitment and retention and cultivation, they've just really been dynamic partners for the library since I've gotten here. And I suspect, obviously before I've gotten here too, but I only know from what I've seen since I've gotten here that the library, we're going to be counting on the Foundation more and more because, you know, obviously the diminishing power of our dollar in this, this economy, we've realized that. And so, and with our limitations in funding with the, you know, with our, our property tax levy and our 1% cap, we really are relying on our Foundation to fill gaps where we otherwise cannot provide for them in our, in our budget. And so Foundation team has been really instrumental in raising awareness and also connecting with our stakeholders and our donors. And so I want to lift them up. And then leadership team, I want to end with this phenomenal team here. Our work, as you heard from Marwan's report, has been focusing on specifically where we want to go as an organization. And so evaluating those funding gaps and creative ways to maximize our resources in those funding gaps and what do we need to be a vibrant library in the future? That's what we've really been discussing. Because the work of the library doesn't stop just because, you know, there's some financial instability. We still, as you heard from our folks today in the north end, folks are still attending programs, we still have lots of engagement. So how can we keep that up and how can we build a vibrant, stable library of the future? And so there's been a lot of visioning, a lot of work that has gone into that. And so Marwan alluded to the fact that the team has talked through what will be a pathway for us to be able to stabilize our finances in the future and be able to provide, you know, more and more to this county. And really, it's not a matter of providing more, it's about being able to meet the needs of the residents in this county. So we're really looking at data of what's needed, where are people at and where are their gaps and how can we serve them better? And so that's really where we're at as a library system. And so, yes, there's a potential that the library would be, would have a ballot measure that it would be presenting to this county, but we're still not there yet. We still need to talk more as a team. We still need to talk more with our board team, which we have done in retreats and we've talked through what that process can look like. And I think our, our staff know that that's something we're considering right now. So that work will, could be continuing throughout the month of September and, and largely through October in order to figure out what our pathway will be and what our timeline will be. In addition to figuring out how we can envision a, a new central library, if that's if that's what's needed in order to leverage the, the services that we want to continue to put out to the community. And so namely what, what Marwan was talking about is this notion that, and we've, we've talked about this before in this, in this room. And now our Sylvan Way building is a near 50 year old building that is, you know, not built to serve the future needs of a library. And so it is very incumbent upon us to, to realize what the potential is for leveraging whatever assets we have now, whatever potential assets we could gain later in order to build a new library that would help sustain our growth and sustain our staff and be able to still provide the things that the staff or that our community needs to be successful here. And then it's all about growth and development. From the earliest times a person comes in a library, which is usually for storytime as a baby, to the time that they are, you know, retiring and living in the community and thriving. And we want to provide for all of those folks. And, and I'm proud that this team has bought into a vision to leave a legacy for the library and not, this team has not been self-serving and think about what they can do for themselves or their departments or what they can do now or for the next job. This team is really locked into the fact that, and it's not about building a legacy for our names. It's about building a legacy for the community that we all hold dear to our hearts. I think most of us have come from other locations besides a couple of leadership team members. Most of us are not native to Kitsap. And so I think for us, we've grown to love this place. Me personally, I've grown to love this and have called it home. I've confided in the leadership team to say that this is, this is where I want to retire. I'm not afraid to put that out there. And so to do that, you have to invest in the community, not only in living here, working here, but starting to dream about what you can leave for the community. And that's ultimately why we're all working together is to leave a legacy and to do some important things for the library. So stay tuned for that. All of that to say, we're still busy with all of our organizational goals and those are still being handled along with our plans for the future of the library. So you heard from a couple leadership team members and you'll hear from a couple more in October when we come back for a long range strategic planning meeting about the other parts of, of our planning and what we're doing for the organization. So I'm really proud of this team. This is where I'll end it. I'm proud of our board. Proud of the work we've done in a very short time. And I think we've made some good impacts in the community thus far. And there's still a lot of work to be done, a lot of it daunting and a lot of it, when you think about it, overwhelming. But I'm, I have full confidence in our team that these are the things that we'll accomplish in my tenure here. And hopefully, you know, beyond that, we'll leave that legacy we're intending to leave for a better library system for everybody else. So lots happening, lots of good stuff in the library and we're looking forward to seeing you all at September 15th. Come with your appetites. There is going to be a taco truck, so we'd like you all there. And that's my report. Any questions?
Dan has his marching orders.
I was just going to make a comment that.
Yes.
The percentage change for the first six months in 2023 for Sylvan shows 21%. That's quite significant there.
Oh, yes, for which part?
Shannon's first one?
Is that door count or? Yes, door count has gone up significantly. I think I can, all of us can probably attest to that. Since our offices are in Sylvan, lots of activity, lots of people call Sylvan their home, which is again what I talked about in terms of that facility being sort of, you know, the launch pad of everything we do. We're just out of space in Sylvan. We were talking today, we're trying to, we will likely be, you know, we, every time we have to meet, for instance, we have teams come, we have to figure out where we're going to meet and where we're going to be. Last week, I think I met in Jeannie's office with the crew because my office is too small. And so we're just plum out of space. But yes, attendance has definitely increased for door count for Sylvan over the past year. Shannon might be able to speak to that.
Yeah, I can jump in a little on that. I mean, as Jason pointed out, there's probably a lot of reasons. Two very important ones, I think, are we've promoted an amazing staff member to our adult services librarian, Cindy. And we've also brought in a teen librarian as well this year. They've both really hit the ground running, getting out there, forming new partnerships, having meetings and of course doing a lot of programming too. So it's been really, really cool to see kind of a full staff and what they can accomplish together.
Thanks, Shannon. Any other questions? All right, I think I don't see any old business, new business, housekeeping. The next meeting is September 24th. Thank you, Stephanie. And then I don't see any topic for next month's regular meeting unless you have anything to add, Jason?
To be determined.
Okay. Great. Unless there's anything else, I think that's the end of the agenda and we're ready to adjourn. Do I need to do that via motion? We can.
No, I think you just get to slam the gavel.
There. Thank you, everybody.